Okay. Good evening, it is 7:01 and I would like to ask if there is a motion to open the public hearing on local law number one proposed of 2016 entitled Tax Levy Limit Override.
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion to open was made by Deputy Mayor and seconded by Trustee Schneider. So, the public hearing is now open and we'll leave it open for a couple minutes, see if anyone comes. And incidentally, I will add that the Village Board of Trustees are in agreement that we were not going to actually pass this law. We had set up this public hearing thinking we might need it and having just received the tentative budget, it's quite clear that we're going to be able to stay under the tax cap. So, we are basically pulling this law off the agenda, but since the public hearing was scheduled, we should honor that.
Yep. And in fact, we should chat a little bit about the pros and cons of doing this because the concern is if you don't use the tax cap but fail to rescind this resolution, then people who should be eligible for the rebate related to staying under the tax cap won't get it. So, there are risks to doing this, especially in a time when it's not necessary. And that was in our thinking about rescinding the resolution.
Right, yep. And the advantage was going to be that if we got down to the 11th hour and we weren't going to be able to stay under the cap, we would have permitted ourselves to exceed it. But knowing what we knew, it looked like we didn't need to. So, it seems to me that we are not going to have any members of the public apart from Mr. Hudson. Is there a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
That was Trustee Ezroti, is there a second?
Second.
That was Trustee Schneider, all in favor?
Aye.
It is 7:04 and the public hearing is closed. All right, now we'll move on to our regular meeting. Good evening, 7:04 and I hereby call to order the March 2016 meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. Would you please join me in rise for the pledge of allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay. Village Clerks' Report, Clerk Bruno, please.
Yes, clerks offered so 500 hashtag, two tables, four classes since the last meeting. I attended one planning board meeting, one zoning board appeals meeting, and a planning board workshop.
It's a very, a full load.
Yeah. It was busy.
Thank you very much. Approval of minutes from previous meetings in your binders, I believe we have two sets, regular board meeting minutes from February 17th and then board workshop minutes from March 9th, having to do with when we sat with the village engineer, Ms. Nelson of Crawford and Associates to go over details related to the CFA grant from New York State Department of State. Is there a motion to accept both sets of minutes?
So moved.
That was Trustee Schneider and seconded by Trustee Ezroti. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The minutes are accepted. Treasurers' Report, I have here, and I would also just like to say that our new treasurer, technically Deputy Treasurer, Treasurer Bonnie Day is learning the ropes quickly. Came with some good experience and she's doing a lot of good work, so I just want to mention her and thank her. For the Treasurers' Report, March 16th, 2016, out of the general funds, $28,075.35, out of the water fund, $7,188.52, and out of the sewer fund, $12,170.55, for a total of Is there a motion to accept the Treasurers' Report?
So moved.
Okay, that was, a motion was made by Deputy Mayor Major and seconded by Trustee Ezroti. Is there any discussion?
The sewer is higher than usual, is that the new pump?
That would be the new pump, yes.
Okay.
So, and there's another new pump coming. We have two pumps over there at the pump house, which in an area of the village where we can't take advantage of gravity, literally pushes the sewage towards the treatment plant. We had a pump fail, so we were on a single pump, and that is a tenuous position.
These pumps are pretty old.
Both of them are still.
These pumps were quite old and had already been rebuilt at least once each, so we got a brand-new pump, so now we're on the new pump and the old pump, and we've got another new pump in the, it's been ordered, and that will go in.
We did look at repairing your old pump, but discovered on inspection that it would have cost more to repair it than to replace it.
Yeah, these are about $5,500 apiece, so. With that discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the Treasurers' Report is accepted. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Trustee Schneider and Deputy Mayor Major, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to zoning report, please, Trustee Ezroti.
In the period from February 10th to March 15th, two building permits were issued, two inspections were done, two certificates of completion were issued, and seven complaints that followed up on. The complaints, interestingly enough, have mostly to do with garbage in the yard. It's probably more common at this time of the year, you know, we haven't been out in the yard for a while, we tend to forget to clean up, but we're glad that the code enforcement officers bringing this to the attention of people who are neglecting to clean up garbage or pull their garbage cans in a timely way. One violation has to do with property which has been neglected for many, many years and is now in receivership, so that looks like a problem which will come to some resolution. It's at 80 Broadway.
Montgomery.
Montgomery.
80 Montgomery.
Montgomery, I've heard twice. The issuing of building permits had to do with repair of a garage and the installation of a generator, pretty common activities. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Ezroti. So, we have here on our agenda three items of regular business, but we are adding three more, so I'm going to tell you what those are before I ask for a public comment on agenda items. So, we have election results, proposed budget modifications, and the setting of a public hearing on the tentative budget. We are adding, and of course, the agenda is always subject to change, we try and get as much done before the monthly meeting as we can, because otherwise we basically have to wait a month till we all meet again and can take certain actions, so. Numbers four, five, and six are going to be authorization to sign an environmental assessment form, a resolution establishing lead agency for the seeker process, and sending solar guidelines materials to the planning board. All three of these have to do with solar guidelines that we are going to adopt here in the village. At this stage, there will be guidelines, shoulds, not shalls, and the guidelines themselves will be posted on our website, hopefully tomorrow, so you can read about them. So, with that said, are there any public comments on agenda items only? Didn't think so. So, we'll get into regular business. The election results, we had, it was our own little super-duper Tuesday in the Village of Tivoli yesterday and around the area. We had 62 total votes cast, 60 votes for Judge Howard Clark, 60 votes for Trustee Emily Major, and 53 votes for Trustee Jean Anne Schneider. There were no absentee ballots, so congratulations to Jean Anne and Emily and Judge Clark. And I want to give a special thanks to Clerk Bruno, who ran her first election here, and yes, and I think, you know, as I had said last month and in the newsletter, we did it a little differently, we had the old-timey ballot box with the lock on it, and I want to thank our tireless election inspectors, Margaret Lemon and Judith Scott, and of course, Margaret Lemon's been doing this long enough that she remembered when we had the ballot box before the lever machines and it was all old hat to Margaret, so that was great. Moving on to the proposed budget modifications, which are in your binder, I want to again credit Bonnie Day with how she's presented these in a very palatable format, if I can find it. There we are. So, you know, we've been doing this every month as we get towards the end of fiscal year, trying to spend what we budget and not have money left over at the end of the year, and as some lines get hit too much, we have to move funds over, so in these budget modifications, we have decreasing of park bathroom, decreasing of the executive line, decreasing of police, and decreasing of streets, and increases to traffic control, attorney, central data processing, and we also had a decrease to taking money out of sewer contingency to put it in line G, 8128.4 sanitary sewers. So, when we have a bill come in and there's actually not enough money in that line, we put money in that line.
And that contingency line was perfect because it was spent on a not a normal, it was really on a replacement that was not anticipated.
That's exactly right. That's how contingency ought to work. So, we've all had a chance to look at these, is there a motion to adopt the proposed budget modifications?
I move.
That was Deputy Mayor Major, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Schneider, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the budget modifications are accepted. Regular business number three, set public hearing on tentative budget for Wednesday, April 13th, 2016 at 7:00 PM here in the historic Washtepicee Hall. So, the tentative budget process, it has to be finished by May 1st, sort of have to think backwards, and the public obviously gets a chance to comment on that, so that chance to comment will be April 13th, and it will actually be published and posted approximately a week ahead of that, so people have plenty of time to digest it. And then between now and that week, the Board of Trustees has a number of board workshops and we're going to be tweaking it. So, with that said, is there a motion to set the public hearing for the tentative budget for Wednesday, April 13th at 7:00 PM here in the Washtepicee Hall?
So moved.
Motion was made by Trustee Ezroti and seconded by Trustee Schneider, is there any discussion? I hope some people will come to that public hearing and we will help you understand how we're spending your money. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And our public hearing is set, and again, that tentative budget will be published approximately a week earlier. Moving on to number four, we put this on less than an hour ago, so let me get organized here. Authorization to sign the EAF, that's an environmental assessment form. Where are we? It's a 13-page document which our village planner has already filled out, and I just need board approval to sign it. Is there a motion permitting the mayor to sign page 13 of the EAF?
And this is to make us, you, okay.
Is that a motion?
This is related to the solar?
Yes.
Recommendations, yeah.
Yeah.
I move.
All right, that's a motion by Trustee Ezroti, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the Deputy Mayor, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I will sign that a little bit later. Next, we have a motion to adopt the lead agency resolution for seeker. Be it further resolved that a determination of significance will be made at such time as all reasonably necessary information has been received by the village board to enable it to determine whether the action will or will not have a significant effect on the environment. This is a resolution classifying action and establishing lead agency type-one action for state environmental quality review. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
That was made by Trustee Schneider, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Ezroti. Any discussion?
The purpose of lead agency is because this is going to be reviewed by more than one board, the planning board as well as the village board, so one board has to be the posers and lead it.
Very good.
Am I correct?
You're giving us all the background on everything tonight, it's great.
Oh, into it.
Into it, yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the resolution is adopted. Thirdly, I'm going to ask for a motion to send the design guides, part one of the EAF and the coastal assessment form to the village planning board and ask them if the proposed design guides are consistent with the coastal policy standards in the LWRP and to recommend whether an EIS should be required, that being environmental impact statement. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Motion was made by Deputy Mayor Major, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Schneider, any discussion?
The LWRP is the local waterfront revitalization plan, which I believe was passed in 2005 or '95, anyway, we have.
I think it was '95.
I think it was '95, yep.
All right, our education continues, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes, so we were able to get that started, there'll probably be some more next month, we'll see, but thank you all for that. That concludes regular business. The next board meeting will be held Wednesday, April 20th at 7:00 PM preceded by a workshop at 6:00 PM here at the historic Washtepicee Hall, and the April 20th board meeting will also be the annual reorganizational meeting, so we will do swearings-in of the newly elected folks, and there'll probably be a bit more ceremony, maybe some music, and my favorite part of that night is we get to give out the citizen awards, so I hope everyone will come and celebrate Tivoli with us in the new year on April 20th.
It'll be on the third floor?
It'll be upstairs, because we're going to get a better crowd than tonight, what do you think? Yeah? All right.
I'd be able to.
The regular workshop will be April 13th at 7:00 PM, which of course is also the public hearing on the tentative budget, as we established earlier. Moving on to committee reports, Trustee Ezroti, please.
Ah, yes. Okay. I'd like to report on the wells in the Tivoli water system. This time of the year, there's less demand on wells because there's less demand for additional water, so the vault lot well was not pumping, McKnight number one was pumping at a rate of about 11,000 gallons per minute for the entire month. The 2PW well was off for five days during the month but was otherwise pumping at about 10,000 to 11,000 gallons per minute. The 5PW well was off for all but eight days and was also pumping at 10,000 to 11,000 gallons. There's going to be a test at the end of the month. The 4PE and 10PE wells were pumping for the entire month at a rate of about 18,000 to 19,000 gallons, and the Woodmark wells were pumping at 21,000 to 22,000 gallons per minute. The water towers height stayed at 163 to 167 feet for the entire month, and there were no water main breaks. Okay, this is my question. Does everyone know where the 2PE wells are located?
No.
I do not, where are they located?
Pots east.
Ah.
We have PE and PW.
Okay.
So, PE is on the east side of 9G, north of 78.
Right.
The PW wells are on the west side.
And you can see a little wellhouse, right?
On the west side, yeah. The PE wells are further back and they actually don't have a wellhouse. They run over to the PE, to the PW and the wellhouse is where they get treated.
The McKnight, is that up on the hill?
This really is a quiz.
McKnight well is located across from Clay Hill Road on Broadway, and that is one of the sites of our recent daffodil blitz, and they're coming up.
Yes, yes, so we should be watching for those, right?
Yes.
Because they are about ready to come. There was also an analysis of the water, it was tested at two different locations and found to meet the state standards for water purity.
Always a good thing.
Which is not to be taken for granted, this is.
No, definitely not.
Indeed. Okay. I'm also supposed to report on the planning and zoning boards. Both boards have been very busy. The zoning board of appeals has been engaged in a lotline readjustment out south, north and east of town, where a property is being divided, and actually, the Potts Farm is receiving a portion of that, just near the cemetery, and it's, doesn't happen very often, it's a complicated process, and it requires, because part of the land is in the town of Red Hook and part of it is in the village of Tivoli, it requires a joint meeting of the two zoning boards of appeals, so that's going on on the 4th of April. The planning boards, last night at their workshop, or Monday night at their workshop, reviewed three different applications. One was to convert the old deli to an apartment, one was for, to put into the Marius establishment next door, a wine and tapas bar, which, so there are issues there that have to do with outdoor lighting and tables and parking and all of that, and if anybody's interested, there will be a public hearing on the 4th Monday of this month, the date of which I've forgotten, but.
You can figure it out, right?
20th.
Right. So, those boards are working pretty hard.
They sure are.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And the low staff program, the number of points that the fire persons have been awarded for their length of service award has been calculated, and the board has approved that calculation and it will be posted for review by anybody in the program for 30 days in the firehouse in the next day or two.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Ezroti. Trustee Schneider, please.
Going to keep it very brief tonight, the village court charge volume summary report for the month of February, so February 1st through February 29th, charges received totaled 21, charges disposed were 15, and a total of $952.50 was collected and remitted to the state comptroller's office. The only other thing I wanted to touch on was the shared services highway study has, I know that we've spoken previously, but moving into the implementation phase and starting to begin the process of actually putting into play the recommendations that were made by the consultant in the original grant. We actually kick off the next portion of the phase tomorrow morning with a meeting at 9 o'clock at the Town of Red Hook.
Garage, right? Where at, at the garage?
I believe it's actually at the town hall tomorrow morning.
It's bouncing around now.
Again, open to the public but not open for public discussion at that meeting, and I'm looking forward to working with all of the folks on that committee to move forward with the implementation. I think it's going to be very beneficial for all three of the municipalities involved. Again, that's the town and village of Red Hook and the village of Tivoli. That's all I've got.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Schneider.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Major, please.
Okay, well, under the library heading here, there's been, there's a series of music appreciation workshops at the library on Thursdays. First one was March 10th, we have one coming up on the 17th, and one on the 31st, 6 to 7 PM, and they're just informal discussions about the development of classical music, and there is some listening, and you don't have to know anything, so just come and enjoy it, learn a little something. There's a beginner's gardening workshop at the library, Tuesday, March 22nd at 6:30 PM, where master gardener Loren Seach from Cornell Co-op Re-Extension will be teaching about how to begin gardening, and it's free, so come on by. And there is a free concert at the library, Thursday, April 14th, 7:00 PM, and the band is called Hungry Town. It's an American folk music band and sounds great. Also, as always, 10:30 on Tuesday mornings, preschool storytime with Miss Penny, not to be missed. Also downstairs at the library, the renovation of the east room is underway, the new floor is in, Bonnie's new office area is all set, looking fantastic, and, you know.
And there have been some sparkling renovations to the bathroom, thanks to our mayor.
I painted the bathroom. I did, I was so sick of it, I had to do it. I hope everybody likes it.
It's really nice, come check it out, perhaps when you come to the library.
Come check out the bathroom.
What else is going on? Tivoli Bay is, the Riverkeeper is having their annual river sweep on May 7th, and if you show up at the canoe launch at the North Bay about 9:00 in the morning, you can bring a boat or don't bring a boat, come pick up some garbage, it's, there's a lot of it, and it's a good thing to do, it's a lot of fun. Also, the ticks are out in force, I can attest personally, so when you're outside, be aware.
Treat your pets and.
Treat your pets and pull your socks up over your pant legs. It's a good look.
It's a good look.
Yeah.
Those are your new ones.
In terms of historic resources, we're working with Historic Red Hook and Historic Red Hook's Bard Intern to update a survey that was done in 1978 of the historic structures within the village of Tivoli, and there are 397 of them.
Wow.
And a structure could be a building, but it could also be.
A wall.
A stone wall or, you know, a potential archaeological site, and so we're going to be going through that database and trying to get it all in order and see what we've got.
And eventually, does that get expressed as some sort of map, so we can see what are these 390 things we've got?
Oh, yeah, there are great things going on in terms of technology and mapping, and, you know, Bard is actually having a half semester class, starting in two weeks, where they're taking some historical maps and embedding old census data in them, so you can just sort of click on a property and find out all sorts of things, and apparently the possibilities are limitless. So, like what was going on with the, generally, information that gets embedded in maps is like infrastructure, right? But this is.
Historical.
Another application for that, so I'm a little excited, maybe you can. So, I'm a little excited. Maybe you can... And finally, the, um, at the Almendorf Inn on Sunday at three o'clock, there's a talk on women and prohibition, which ought to be kind of interesting. Oh, one more thing. Thanks to the fire department for the most awesome breakfast.
Yes.
That was...
It was good.
Yeah.
It was really good.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor Major. Uh, the Green Committee wants me to remind everyone that there is a Solarize Northern Duchess event happening upstairs in this building on the afternoon of April second. Solarize is a, is a regional campaign to promote solar energy, to help, um, businesses and homeowners, uh, learn about what their options are. And there's also some bulk discounts on actually, um, purchasing solar panels. Uh, there's gonna be a large banner at our four corners probably in about a week. So April second, Solarize upstairs. If you read our newsletter that came in your water bill this month, uh, you'll recall I talked about three grants. And, uh, those were the, uh, thousand-dollar Quick Start Tree Grant we were waiting to hear about, the, um, one hundred and twenty thousand dollar Community Development Block Grant through Duchess County for Pine Street Improvements, and the DEC Estuaries Grant for drainage down on our waterfront parcel. That is a fifty thousand dollar grant. We got the tree grant. We won a thousand dollars. There's no match. And, uh, we're gonna let the Green Committee figure out, uh, which, which trees to get, and, uh, we'll work with them to see where they're gonna go. But I hope we continue our winning streak into the next two. Congratulations to the Green Committee for, um, you know, pursuing that grant. It's really great. You know, we had planted four trees earlier, uh, out of our own pockets. This should get us at least ten more, maybe twelve. Uh, so, good things. And, um, well, they already mentioned the bathroom, but yes. Is there any, um, public comment? I don't think we're gonna get much. Any other, um, comments from the Board of Trustees? I think we're at about our shortest meeting ever.
Well, there is a relationship between the Solarize, um, meeting on the second of April and all of those documents that we just filed.
Glad you pointed that out, yeah.
Yeah.
Tell us a little more about these guidelines. What are we trying to do here?
Well, I, I think that we're trying to, um, encourage the, um, proliferation of solar while at the same time being aware of, um, you know, the fact that we are in a national landmark district. And, um, you know, just trying to be sensitive to, uh, the balance between aesthetics and, um, sustainable energy and, um...
Right.
Yeah.
Maybe if you can put them in the backyard instead of the front porch.
Right, exactly.
Guidelines.
Guidelines. And they, they have, those guidelines will give you good suggestions for where you'll actually get some efficiency, but not...
Right, well, and the guidelines, yeah.
Or spoil a street game.
Yeah, the guidelines come from the, um, from the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and, um, a lot of thought has gone into it, you know, from, and input from communities that have been, you know...
Great idea.
Time, and, uh, yeah. And they do, you know, conform to the way that they seem, you know, mostly, most of the, um, panels are being installed anyway, in that it's recommended that they be low-profile and, you know, don't rip off your historic roof in order to do this, and that kind of...
Okay, thank you. Well, we're not gonna have any public comment on anything here. Mr. Hudson, you wanna give us a question so we can stretch this meeting a little bit?
How are we all doing tonight?
I think we're doing good. I think we're having a good time. Thank you. That's a great question. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Because apparently we all wanna hang out here for a while, yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was, um, Trustee Schneider and Deputy Mayor Major. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seven thirty-five, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.